I'd like to call the board to the April regular meeting of the East Arden Township Board of Supervisors. Please all stand in the front of the regions. The board of supervisors to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of this law. Okay, no calls.
Bill Blasky, that achieves the place.
Kelly Ball, Township Engineer.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Chris, Director of Funia.
Jack Winnebilly, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Joseph McAlley, Solicitor.
Supervisor Dennis DeZanto.
Supervisor Kevin McDavid.
Supervisor Ashley Bureau.
Chairman Joe Vass.
For the events that we met in the executive session before this meeting, you talked about the meeting matters of personnel and radiation. All right, I'll use for motion for approval of the meeting minutes from the March twenty-second range of the meeting.
I put that to my motion.
Put in the form of motion by Supervisor DePiero, or is it second?
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Anyone here to make a comment that's here? Anybody online? Okay, comments by the board.
Yeah, I would like to bring up the, then we had a Friday, the Easter egg hunt. Staff did a great job. I mean, it was, there was a lot of people here and I liked the way they did it from other places. They separated for ages where the younger kids that had a chance to be able to get their picture taken and then later on then the older kids were done. It was so well organized. I just want to thank everybody for such a great job.
Okay, I'll take second act because I was here too and, you know, I didn't eat after I'd like to make myself. But it was a great day. As it is with most events like that, it's five seconds of pure emotion for the kids and they get the eggs and then, okay, then the next group comes in and anybody that didn't get an egg, we got extra stuff at the snack stand for them. So everybody went home with something and I would just echo the sentiments. The staff was great. Parks and Rec, Natalie and Brian did a great job and everybody involved. It was, it was a beautiful day and we're looking to have such a facility here to handle those things.
Joe, I think you should put in a request and ensure that they have their each group.
Okay, I gotta admit, he's in that eight group. Okay, thank you. All right, let's start with old business. I demand authorization to re-advertise the Heroes Park Improvement Project. And I'd like to call on our esteemed Director of Engineering, Jim Sullivan, to review this
item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We had been only scheduled for the fourteenth of April, which was a couple days ago, and we received zero favors. So that's why we're looking for an authorization re-advertise. But for some reason, we don't get the second time the township's able to hire a contractor to do the work.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
What did the, what did, yeah, what did the improvements entail?
It was the parking lot. It was the repaying, the square and all, restriping, making it look a lot better.
And that's, that's part of the problem. It's such a small job for payers. There's not a lot of interest, especially this time of year when they really go at it. So we'll see what comes back and we'll look from there.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to re-advertise the Heroes Park Improvement Project. Hopefully, we do get some bidders on that. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDavid. More favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to attend the award, twenty twenty-two EDA curb ramp project. I'd like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Ball.
Thank you Supervisor McDavid. Under this project, there will be EDA compliant curb ramps that will be installed at several intersections throughout the township. I believe there are twenty-two intersections. Under this motion, I recommend authorization, the release of a notice of intent to award to the, which is NJSC Concrete. They submitted their bid in an amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, five hundred, or four, three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And now the recommendation is to issue a notice of intent to bid, to award, and then we will have a thirty-day review period to ensure they comply with their responsible contract ordinance. However, preliminary review does show that they are able to comply. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I just have a question. Are these brand new that never have been done or are these sidewalks that have been done in the past but they weren't done to the laws? You know, the laws are different now than they were before.
Sure. So several of them, it's a combination. Some of them don't have a ramp at all and some of them just aren't compliant with today's standards.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, any more comments, questions? I'll make, make the motion to approve the intent to award the twenty twenty-two EDA curb ramp project. And I'm sorry, what was the company?
NJSC Concrete.
Okay, NJSC Concrete. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero. More favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Resolution number twenty-eight fifty-eight, Building Safety Month. I'd like to call the Township Manager, Robert Hart, to review this. Or do you want me to read this first?
Oh, thank you. Supervisor DeSanto.
Does want to read?
Most of this is, I'll give it, I'll give a little preamble and then, and then if you can read the resolution, it'd be great. As you know, you watch all the news from your gear with the different problems and from the city of Philadelphia when they had the collapse, that, those kinds of things happen all over this country and it can happen anywhere at any time. And we, our staff is, has rededicated itself to make sure these issues are well diagnosed, well addressed, and really get out ahead of things. Especially in aging communities, with some aging buildings, it's important to be absolutely beyond proactive. So we take it, we take it very seriously and this is something that our, our code staff and our permitting staff, building staff, both thought it was important to keep hot going, to get out on social media, it's on this month, so.
Our resolution of the Township of East Arden Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in the United States of America, Building Safety Month, May twenty twenty-two. Whereas East Arden Township is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas our confidence and resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction and occupancy of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built, in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. I made someone angry. And whereas these modern buildings' codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public that the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety are our local code officials who assure us of safe and sustainable and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas the safety for all building codes in action, the theme for Building Safety Month twenty twenty-two encourages us to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all our benefit. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the board of supervisors of East Arden Township to hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-two as Building Safety Month and encourage our citizens to join us in acknowledging and participating in Building Safety Month twenty twenty-two.
That was a mouthful. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, having read that, I wish for a motion to approve the resolution number twenty-eight fifty-eight to.
Yeah, I was gonna say I'll put in a form of motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion made by Supervisor DePiero, seconded by Supervisor DeSanto. All favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Affirm the purchase of twenty twenty-two Toyota R eight R four. I'd like to call on Township Manager, Mr. Hart, to review this on our please.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero. As you recall, you may recall last month, the affirmed purchase of two vehicles that had been long, had a long wait to be delivered. Soon after that, we had the opportunity and we had to make the decision very quickly for another vehicle that would we eventually have come to for, a Toyota R four hybrid. Part of the reason we took this opportunity, when I called the board to, to purchase, we had currently bought a hybrid for our codes vehicle, the same vehicle, and it has worked out better than we ever expected. It's the most popular car for a lot of reasons. I am not filling it up as much. It's, it runs well, it's, everything about it has been a positive. So we had this opportunity come to us and I can tell you, we're still waiting on a, on a police vehicle over nine months now. It was the time from we've been, when we've ordered it. So we don't know where the, the backlog is going to, when it's going to free up here and there, and we had this opportunity before us and the vehicle was purchased at thirty thousand three thirty-three, which was a fantastic price, less than the first one we bought. So we thought this was a great opportunity, forty-two minutes just, opportunity to affirm that purchase for our codes vehicle.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, I will make a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty twenty-two Toyota R four. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDavid. More favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one comment or, and I meant to say it, is they're built in Virginia.
All right, that's great. In America.
Okay, next item on the agenda, affirm the appointment of the Municipal Emergency Management Coordinator. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Mr. Robert Hart.
Okay, we'll go with that even though Mr. McDevitt's went out of order.
I'm sorry.
But that's okay. But that's okay. Well, we're gonna.
I was in a rut.
That's okay. Okay, I'm, thank you Supervisor McDevitt. As you know, we, in the past, we've had, like Eric Johnson, you have an appointed Emergency Management Coordinator for many years, not only in this county, but throughout the Commonwealth. It was more of a title, finger-hand position, who did a lot of other things, and we did that sort of designation, a township needed it. We have taken, we have upped our name in that respect. Recently, over the last year, year and a half, under Chief Blasky, who has taken, really taken a hold of the whole emergency services operation, and professionalized it in a way that was never really thought of from a, from a higher-end organization perspective, had really taken a hold of it and brought the different pieces together in, in a more cohesive way. Part of that is appointing someone who we're working with on a regular basis, who's involved, who understands it, and it's an ongoing, continuing, evolving plan and operation. We have for you Brian Sargre tonight, who is one of our, our codes individuals. He is assistant fire marshal, he responds to fires, he has a whole host of certifications and, and many years' experience in these varying fields. So he's the perfect person we have on staff for this position. And if I, before I put that in front of the, if I could ask Chief Blasky if he has anything else, I hate to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. Just great to mic it. First off, thank you for the kind words. Completely one-hundred percent team method. Picking up Brian Sargre's been tremendous. So what we've been able to do is we've always had a norm that meets the legal standards. This year, the next meeting, we will have a norm that far exceeds the legal standards. It's in the printer now, otherwise it would have been available today to put it out there. We're now working on updating the Emergency Operations Plan. Our norm, in fact, is probably ninety percent of an Emergency Operations Plan. So that's how far ahead it is. In addition to that, we've completely revamped the Emergency Operations Center, not just the physical plan, but also the procedures, the personnel. So we really have a very, very solid Emergency Operations Plan, and Emergency Operations Center, and a, a organization that can react to anything. So between the training of the police, joint training with the Northern Fire Engine Company, the Director of Fire Services has done a tremendous job, and now bringing Brian on is like the icing on the cake. So I'm very, very proud to say that this team has really worked wonders to bring the emergency management process, all three legs, I don't want to leave out Plymouth Ambulance, have been a great, great bond. So between Northern Fire Engine, Township Fire Services, the East Arden Police Department, and Plymouth Ambulance Association, I think that the folks, our residents, our visitors, and our businesses can feel very, very, very safe and secure that this township will provide the best possible emergency service in Montgomery County, take that, take that, possibly in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll just make one, I just want to agree with Mr. Hart, that you're to be commended for your input into this and your organization of this effort, and it's, it's to the benefit of the township, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, I'll call for a motion to advert, I'm sorry, to affirm the appointment of Brian Sargre as the Township's Emergency Management Coordinator.
Put that in the form of a motion.
Supervisor DeSanto puts in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor McDavid. All favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, Mr. Sargre is now our Emergency Management Coordinator. All right, authorization to advertise the Old Arch Road Sidewalk Improvement Project. And I'll go back to our Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sullivan, to go into a little detail on this one.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The township received a multimodal transportation fund grant for sidewalks along Old Arch Road. These sidewalks would extend from town, Town Mayor East, up to at least twenty-one-ten Old Arch Road. We got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars. We will have a, an alternate to go from twenty-one-ten Old Arch to an actual Old Arch Park. Reason we have it, just the base point is because I assured Mr. Chris we would have awarded one hundred thousand dollars in grant funds if we had. Hopefully, we can do the whole thing. And we'd like, we're gonna opt to bid probably first, second week of May, have some for board of supervisors to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Sullivan, I know there's some construction, there's a couple of developments going on in that same area. Are the contractors also kicking in anything to the sidewalks? They're putting sidewalks as is required.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a dumb question. What side of the street are the sidewalks on?
I'm kind of which way you go.
State?
I'm kind of from Johnson Highway. Okay, they're on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Town Mayor East is on the right-hand side, and Corporal East, that, that topic center is on the side as well.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to approve the advertisement of the Old Arch Road Sidewalk Improvement Project, or the authorization to advertise, I'll make, correct. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero. More favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Monthly expenditures. I'd like to call on Finance Director Dave Chris to cover this.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto.
Did they not tell you I should take it to you?
Presented to you tonight are the Township expenditures for the month, more specifically the expenditures from the date of the last board meeting to the day before this board meeting. The total expenditures for that time period totaled one million fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The accounts payable expenditures, the payments for our utilities, supplies, services, et cetera, totaled four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, et cetera, totaled five hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and six cents. Township staff is asking for the underpours approval of these expenditures, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures for a total of one million seven hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor DeSanto. All favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Other business. I didn't do something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things, we have our rain program, paving of the streets, and several other more substantial construction projects are getting ready to start. Our first one will be on Sol Mill Court, which will be a pretty extensive, how long do you expect that to last, Jim?
Somewhere between six weeks and two months, or over to six weeks.
And there's a, really a reconstruction of that, of that whole sort of cul-de-sac area, which is, has badly, badly been. So that is starting, and then the rest of the paving projects will follow right after, after that finishes up. So you'll be seeing that coming, there'll be notifications on Facebook and our website about if there's some, you know, detours or anything that may happen for a couple hours on certain days. So stay tuned for that. I'd like to, I want to thank Jim Sullivan for dressing up as the giant Easter bunny at our Easter egg hunt. You may not have, you may not have noticed, Jim, but if you notice the slow, uneasy gait, you may have, you may have recognized. So thank you, Jim. Where am I at here? There are also several other projects that will be starting this spring. If you're over on Taft Road in that area, you'll notice there's some significant storm or drainage projects going on. There are some decent retrofit projects that will be starting come spring, summer, and even fall. We take that very seriously, as you know, many of our neighborhoods are, were built at a time when we had very few, probably forty years ago is not a hundred years ago. So I say they should have had more forethought when it came to some drainage issues and how we deal with that, putting whole streets in that are on hills without paint inlets at all. Even would, would tell the, the least of engineer in us that the people at the bottom are gonna get that. That was a huge concern in, in not just here in a lot of areas, I guess it was just getting regulations passed decades ago that were, were difficult. But we are trying to, you know, really retrofit now, and there are certain neighborhoods that take, take order in areas that they shouldn't. Add to that, that we seem to be getting more frequent and stronger storms. Jim used to always say that we, he designated the storm you can get is a hundred-year storm. And like I always say, I forbid him to say, forbid him to say, a hundred-year storm, whatever we get for a year, it defeated the whole, the whole purpose. But we're, we have a fantastic public works staff that are doing much of this work in house, which benefits the residents of this township and our township as a whole, because we don't have to go out and pay people, but we're really talented individuals here that are doing it and saving us a fortune and really making us a better community every day. One of those public works workers is also our new, one of our new cameramen, who's in the back, I'd like to welcome Kevin Min, who, in the back, who, who asked me to refer to this kind of spiel, but, but I have to wait and see the final product before I'm under that floor. But thank you for, for doing that, Kevin. Anyway, we're looking forward to a really great spring. We have a lot of things coming up, public works, public parks and rec are looking, working hard on camp, on all of our concerts, if you see, if you saw our concert schedule, AM radio and the Soul Cruisers, it's really gonna be fantastic, we'll have feedback coming. We're gonna up our name as we do each year here, and we're trying to make more programs and events for the residents, just, just even better and bigger, more inclusive. So stay tuned for a really good spring, summer, and we'll have a lot, we'll bring to you in the coming months.
All right, well, thank you for that. And one other thing, another thing that they started is a lot of things for seniors, the senior movie matinee started last month, there's another one I think next week, which is good. The vendors in the area, the local businesses, we contributed some food and snacks and things like that, that's a good thing. And, and, I'm with, we're, they're doing, they're doing a lot already, and we're doing some.
Sure, our, you know, we, well, we made it at an extra effort a couple of years ago to really start building seniors events and programs. We knew there was a need, but we had no idea it was going to explode the way it has, and it's really been successful. And I have no doubt it will continue to grow. So, yeah, we're looking forward to some good, good things over the rest.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Okay, citizens to be heard. Anyone?
Susan McLaughlin, two-nine-two-six, North Whitehall Road. I see on the agenda that you popped over the Whitehall Road sidewalk. Name again.
Sorry, it wasn't on here.
Not on the agenda.
It was on, it was on, there was an initial thing on the agenda, not, not our final agenda, to discuss, to discuss about. We weren't ready to do that at this meeting because part of it is, so just so you know, I wanted to give you a brief thing, but we're gonna schedule that meeting, like I said, with your, with the residents of Whitehall. So we got a grant, you hear this year, as you all know, but for anybody who doesn't know, you know, they got a grant to put some sidewalks on Whitehall Road. We know there's some people, we got calls and emails this week, some people that did want sidewalks, and some people that said, we won't like with sidewalks. That's always the way it is in this situation. But we want, we want a full presentation put together so you understand before you decide whether or not, you live there, and, you know, with what you're into.
Everyone here lives there too. And I think, I'm hoping that they can speak too about it.
Yeah.
But I, but we'll mention this, the day after your last meeting, I was sitting in my living room, because I, I do my work in my living room. And I will read it, the next day, March twenty-third, I was sitting in my home and there was a man in a vest walking the properties with a clipboard. I let him go up and then I kicked him down our side, and it was on my property, I went out and spoke to him. He told me he was reviewing the street for painting of the road. This is Whitehall Road.
Okay.
Now, that being me ask a question. I said that we were told that we may have sidewalks. The young man looked at the papers and said he was wrong and that it was sidewalks. He had a whole stack of papers. Apparently, he was supposed, maybe he was supposed to have done it the week before, and he was from Remington and Vernon, your engineers. Because every piece of paper he had there had Remington and Vernon.
Okay. I'm glad you tell me, because I know nothing about it.
Well, you know, I mean, I can give you a copy of this if you want, but I'll just say it was a young man in a vest.
Who's who?
You know, doing his thing, but apparently, he maybe got the wrong week, I don't know.
Yeah, I do know.
I don't know. I mean, I'm only going by what he told me.
Sure.
But I've also heard a lot, a few other rumors going around about things that may be pushing this idea of sidewalks, that's not just what you might think. So, I mean, I don't have any proof or anything, but there's been rumors going around.
Really?
I'll wait.
Yeah, I don't even know what you're talking about.
What rumors? Because I don't know.
Hospital.
They're gonna find out our hospital.
Now, the hospital, the hospital has, wants to have some work done, and apparently, some part of their property is overflooded, and they may want the sidewalks to be near, up near Marion Avenue.
I, I will say, it's created, whoever started that rumor, I don't, I have no idea what the, that's.
Well, years ago, years ago, now you remember that behind the medical building, which is right behind my house.
Right.
Right? They couldn't. All right? They put in infrastructure all on those firms.
Right.
To do a, a, basically, a garage, a parking garage here in the back.
Right.
Because right now, they have no extra parking anywhere. Every day, when you see people coming in and these people are working, basically, all the workers are in the back. That parking lot is packed. So, that's why they took all those, those trailers out because they needed the, you know, the places for people to park. And basically, that's.
They took the terms out because we told them that they had to.
Well, I understand that. They also needed.
They fought like hell to keep them. I promise you that.
They needed the place for parking. But, now I heard there may be some, a problem with flooding in that area up near Marion Avenue.
Okay. I truly no idea. In fact, the grant that we got, we applied for a year ago. We applied for sidewalk grants because we have a lot of people that say they want sidewalks because they, for a lot of reasons, you know. If you read, people, people want sidewalks. Some people don't.
At the last meeting, basically, the one gentleman got his mailbox knocked over, and then we got his sign knocked down.
Right.
Basically. I mean, the speed limit on Whitehall Road is 40 mile an hour.
We're working on that as well.
That's 40 mile an hour.
Yeah.
Now, years ago, when they built Walla Walla, they never had the speed signs up. And we all went and been said, "Okay, put the speed sign up, but you're not telling people how fast it was supposed to go." So, we got, basically, the organization, I guess you know, had, I guess it would be, to come in with the metal speed signs put underneath because they didn't know how fast it was going. It's a game. That, basically, that speed thing is a game for everybody. I've seen people go 82 mile an hour.
Well, I can tell you, we have, we're working on a plan for that traffic because after last, the speeding. After the last meeting, we, we met and we've had some conversations about that. We have some cameras that we can use, that identify, that we have on another road that we just purchased over the last few months, that have been extremely helpful. Deputy Chief and I have reviewed that with one of our sergeants, one of the sergeants recently. So, we're still working on a plan for that particular, for those issues. But, take those issues aside, the sidewalk thing, we are going to bring your presentation because the sidewalks are part of it, but it's also for the.
It's stormwater management.
Stormwater management. And that's part of it. So, I want you to know the whole picture. And then if you say, "I don't want it at all," or "I want it," but you're fully seeing the picture, and that's really what I want.
If you, if you, I have, right here on Woodland. That's where my house is.
Yes. So, we will take that up. I mean, Mr. Hart is going to schedule a meeting.
I understand.
Oh, yeah.
I understand.
We're taking this time tonight to discuss this.
I'm just mentioning one thing. When we put those rocks in, that helped drainage because it was all grass. Now, not that it was grass, because then I'm connected to the sewer thing underneath the access road from the hospital. So, that all goes down there. Our drainage is good.
Right.
But, other ones are not because it's all grass.
Right.
So, these are the things you have to keep in, in the thing, you know, to be thinking. But, I just wanted to make you aware that the report that you were supposed to get was a little late.
Yeah, I'm going to find out what that gentleman was there, because I don't know anything about that, but I will find out.
Well, it was, it was a young man who worked for Remington and Vernon. I mean, basically, one of the forms that had Remington and Vernon.
Understood. Okay, understood.
And I waited till he was on my, on my lawn. I had to talk to him because I saw him go all the way up.
Did he happen to say what he was there for?
He said, he said, "The paving of the road."
Mr. Hart?
The paving of Whitehall Road.
Yeah.
This guy advised me that he was out there just verifying the original survey they did.
Okay.
So, he was taking lots of pieces, checking each property to make sure the survey was correct.
Okay.
Well, he put, and that was a couple of weeks after they did that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But, that was a clarification.
But, he had a whole stack, so he must have been doing places all over.
He was verifying to make sure they did everything correct.
Yeah. So, he was a young man, was walking up and down, up and down, basically, but he said something about streets, "Hugway. Wait a minute. We're not getting paved."
So, we've already through that, so I'm.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, I, and I appreciate the comments and everybody who came to this concern, but there, there will be a meeting in this for all of you.
Right, that's fine.
And I promise you, nothing's going to get done. We're not going to shut one day, all right? That's not, that's not it.
Well, basically, I've talked to all my neighbors. A good portion of the neighbors on the lawn do not want it. So, that's all I can say. All right.
I appreciate this comment. Is anyone else? Any other comment? No one else? Okay. All right. Well, we got one more, I don't want to get jaded. And that is, you have to come to meetings. And this is short and sweet, but just to tell you something, and it's also all these things I'm saying are on our website, eastnorntgwp.org. Wednesday, April 20th, there's a planning commission meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, May 10th, the zoning hearing board meets at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, May 17th, the regulations commission meeting at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, May 18th, planning commission meeting, 7:00 PM. Monday, the 23rd, historical advisory commission meeting at 6:30. And our next Board of Supervisors regular meeting is Tuesday, May 24th. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Supervisor DeSanto, may I motion adjourn? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.